Thank you and welcome on this crisp fall morning at the beautiful Weinberg Center. Thank you for turning out for the inauguration of the 61st administration of the city of Frederick. In just a moment, we'll begin our program and I'll be asking you to stand at that point for the presentation of colors and please remain standing through the next several elements. The presentation of colors by the Frederick Police Department Color Guard and Fort Dietrich Color Guard. You'll be hearing bagpipes performed by Bill and Alex Dowes. The National Anthem will then be sung by Joan Buckley and Mike Isaacs accompanied by Joyce Summers. Please continue standing at that point as the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Caroline de La Cruz who is a student at the Maryland School for the Deaf. At this time, please stand as the colors are advanced.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars threw the perilous sight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, came through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave toward the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you to the participants of our color guards and those that performed the National Anthem and led the pledge. At this time, I would like to invite forward the mayor's pastor, Reverend Alice Ford from Cavalry United Methodist Church to ask the invocation.
Good morning, Mayor, Board of Aldermen, and guests. I read these words from Archbishop Charles Chapew, who writes, "A friend of mine prays for three things every morning: humility, repentance, and gratitude." I asked her once why she prayed for those three things, why not faith, hope, and charity? Or prudence, or courage, or understanding? She said that humility lets her see herself and the world as they really are, so it's the beginning of wisdom. Repentance helps her to understand and forgive others as she wants to be forgiven herself, so it's the beginning of mercy and justice. And gratitude helps her to remember that she is loved and that she is loved by God and people very much, and so it's the beginning of joy. Here in Frederick, we have much to be grateful for, much to have joy for. It's a great city with great traditions and an extraordinary history, but our greatest gift is our people, who are people of kindness and creativity and generosity. And so in that in mind, let us turn our hearts for a moment in thanksgiving to God, who makes all these good things possible. Let us pray. Eternal God, who has sought your people across the generations, we open ourselves to your presence with reverence and humility. We are grateful for our freedom in which we have been able to choose our leaders. We are thankful for all those who offered themselves for these positions of service and vision. Make of us all honest stewards of the work you place in our hands. Make us good guardians of the dignity that you give as a birthright to every human person. Help us to reach out to the suffering and the persecuted and to protect the poor, the hungry, the weak, and the immigrant. Help us to reflect the light of love to others and to show by our actions that truth, integrity, and service still shape the purpose of the community life that we share. And now we pray your blessings upon Randy and his wife Mary Jane, and the Frederick Board of Aldermen, and Kelly, Michael, Philip, Joshua, Donna, and their supporting families, and all of the 61st administration of the city of Frederick. Set their feet firmly in their appointed offices that they might serve wisely with both caution and risk, protect them from putting themselves above others, grant them sensitive hearts, clear minds, willing spirits, and active courage. And bless this city that they will lead. Grant that we may all be given the gifts to be a place of peace and generosity and welcome. Pour down your grace on all of Frederick so that those who come after will see beyond our buildings and our history to the greater beauty of the goodness and decency of her people. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your love. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Ford. We do want to again thank all of you for turning out today. We have a number of current and former elected officials at various levels of government, and we won't introduce them all, but we'll acknowledge some of the folks that are here representing some of the different levels of government today for this occasion in the city of Frederick. Our federal delegation represented by, from the offices of the two U.S. senators, Juliana Obolitz from Senator Mikulski's office and Robin Summerfield from Senator Cardin's office. Thank you for joining us today. If you could wave. Melissa Joseph from Congressman Van Hollen's office and Sunny Holding from Congressman Delaney's office are here as well. Thank you for joining us. From the Frederick County delegation to the Maryland General Assembly, I see our two state senators are here, delegation chair Senator David Brinkley and Senator Ron Young. Thank you gentlemen. Two days ago, Frederick County turned 265 years old, younger than the city of Frederick, but has been in place for all of that time. Most of our county commissioners this morning are at the make-o, the Maryland Association of Counties Conference, but they are represented here by the president of the last board, the final board of Frederick County Commissioners, Commissioners President Blaine Young. And a lady you'll be seeing more of shortly as she has a key role in our program today, the clerk of the circuit court, Sandra Dalton. And Brigadier General Joseph Caravalho is the commanding general of Fort Dietrich. We thank you for joining us today, sir. As I said, there are a number of other current and former elected officials, including several former mayors, who will be acknowledged a little bit later. But we do appreciate all of you turning out for this important occasion in the history of the city. At this time, we will have a special meeting of the 60th, the outgoing administration of the city of Frederick, who invite the mayor and aldermen to come up on stage for some final business.
I'd like to call to order the final board meeting, or as we call it, special meeting, of the 60th administration of the city of Frederick. We have two orders of business tonight, or actually one order of business and one celebration. The first order of business is the approval of all outstanding minutes. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Young, seconded by Alderman Aloy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is automatic comments. We've asked each, I've asked each of the aldermen to provide outgoing comments, and we'll start with Alderman Young.
Thank you, and good morning. Efficient governance is achieved at the optimal intersection of short-term implementation excellence and long-term strategic planning. To that goal, I'd like to share some food for thought for the 61st administration. First, do not accept the status quo. Yesterday's practices will not meet tomorrow's challenges. Only innovative solutions will address the hurdles that will confront local government as a result of growing financial obligations and dysfunction in Washington. As former mayor Michael Bloomberg of the city of New York observed, as a result of the federal leadership vacuums, cities around the country have had to tackle our economic problems largely on our own. Local elected officials are responsible for doing, not debating; for innovating, not arguing; for pragmatism, not partisanship. We have to deliver results at the local level. Two, do more with less. A much greater and wiser use of technology will contribute to financial sustainability. Find a path to play a stronger role in supporting education. An educated, skilled workforce and a diversified local economy are the best prescriptions for economic prosperity. Empower employees to give their best advice. Innovative thinking should not be limited to elected officials. It should be encouraged among all employees. Think regionally, but act locally. Transportation, economic development, air and water quality, and security are regional issues. Collaboration is the new competition. In conclusion, I'd like to extend my appreciation to several key stakeholders and supporters. To the citizens who elected me to this position, I thank you for placing your faith and trust in me, and I thank you for remaining engaged in making our community stronger. To city staff who have always been responsive and knowledgeable and addressed concerns and issues. To elected officials at the county, state, and federal levels who consistently offered support for the infrastructure and economic development needs of our city. To the professional organizations such as the Maryland Municipal League and the Washington Council of Governments who partner in educating officials, lobby all levels of government for resources, and provide us with best practice information on legislative and policy issues. To my colleagues on this dais who have raised the bar on hard work, constructive dialogue, and thoughtful leadership. Thank you for our numerous collaborative efforts in achieving greater financial stability, transportation and economic development funding, improved safety measures, government transparency, citizen engagement, environmental sustainability, and so much more. And last, but not least, to my family and friends who have been supportive and understanding about my many long hours and obligations, but particularly to my husband, who has been a key source of inspiration, encouragement, and knowledge. There is no doubt in my mind that history will remember you as a pioneer in innovation in municipal government and the father of modern Frederick. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman O'Connor.
It's often been said that every new beginning comes from another beginning's end, and that's what we are here today to celebrate. A new beginning, but the ending of something else. I'm honored to be joined today by my wife Tammy, my daughters Claire and Erin, my father Richard, my sister Anne, and one of my brothers Stephen, along with so many other friends and people that I've met along this journey. I am honored and privileged to have spent the last four years working with among the smartest, most hard-working elected officials this community has ever known. The work of this board has been outstanding, and the work of the 61st administration will only be possible because of the foundation that has been laid by so many before us. So I say thank you for being here, thank you for your support of the city of Frederick, and for your support of this process. I look forward to working with the 61st administration, and I will have great memories of the time that we have spent together as a group over the last four years. You are fantastic friends. Thank you for your service. Good luck in all that you do.
Thank you. Alderman Aloy.
As we're here transitioning from the 60th administration into the 61st, I first want to express my heartfelt thanks to you. You includes my colleagues here at the, at the table, the staff of the city of Frederick, and all of you who participate in life in the city of Frederick. I have learned over this last four years that there's an amazing thing that happens when people come together with one goal in mind, and that is to improve the quality of life and to do great things. And I've seen that over and over again, so I want to say thank you to you. In particular, city staff, your professionalism, your expertise, and the way that you've come together with outside-of-the-box thinking and creativity to solve difficult challenges. For those of you in the community who have seen things happening in the city of Frederick and have brought those things to our attention, again, that amazing spark happens when we come together and that, that creativity sparks a new idea, the innovation that Alderman Young spoke about a moment ago. I want to say thank you for being able to be a part of that. Thank you for allowing me to serve you in the city of Frederick. Thank you for allowing our voice to carry some, some initiatives that you had in mind. Thank you for allowing us to represent you. Thank you to my colleagues for some challenging times and some tough problems solved. Appreciate the, the way that I've grown over this time. And as I was thinking about this moving forward, I, I want to encourage the 61st administration to do likewise, that is, come together, use all of your gifts and talents, because when you join together, there's not just a multiplying, not just a doubling of your efforts, but a multiplication and exponential growth of those efforts. And I'll mention a few more groups that, that I had the privilege to work with, in particular, the Downtown Frederick Partnership, the Weinberg Board, and the National Museum of Civil War Medicine. Those are only three, but those of you who I've had the opportunity to work with over this time, thank you for your efforts in volunteering your time and giving of yourself to make the city of Frederick great, and that, that's what it's all about. When we come together, when we come together with like minds, when we do our best, share our gifts and our talents, everyone's up leveled, the community's improved, and thank you from the bottom of my heart. This has been an honor and a privilege, and I look forward to seeing what you do next.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Crim.
Good morning, everybody. Good to see everybody here on, as John Fiesler said, a nice crisp fall day. I have been honored also to serve the citizens of Frederick, and I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity. Want to thank my family. My husband is here with me today. My children, my grandchildren, all have had to understand that sometimes I had to do other things other than be with my family, and, and those times were very difficult, I must admit. But we do have other levels of government represented here today. We have the federal, the state, the county. But I want everybody to know that there is no higher level of service than the service that is provided by the Board of Aldermen to the citizens of Frederick. We, the next board, all serve you directly. We provide the services that you enjoy every day. To the next board and to my colleagues who are continuing on, the ones who are continuing know we have a great staff. They are knowledgeable, they are experienced, they want to help you. Please give them that opportunity, the people who will be taking our place. And I want to talk about public safety. We have an excellent police department here. Without public safety, nothing works. Tourism doesn't work. Economic development doesn't work. Quality of life doesn't work. You must have public safety, and we have it here in Frederick, and that is something we must cherish and keep. So I just want to provide that little bit of advice to the next board. I'm sure my colleagues who are continuing agree with that, and I'm sure the, the new board will also agree with that. Also, for the citizens and the next board, these citizens elected you. Today is your day. They want you to succeed. Work with them. They want to work with you. And one last sentence, compromise works best for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Russell.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. This group of people is really unique, because when we all took office four years ago, none of us had held political office before. It was sort of, it was a clean sweep, and we had to come together and learn how to do this job together. And as those four years progressed, and we worked to do that, we came together as, I think, a really unique, strong, and, and active board that, that did, I agree, set the bar pretty high, and I, I hope to continue that work. So it's, it's a little, it's, it's bittersweet to be coming back, although I'm, of course, very excited about that. This four years has been, when I think of the mayor and board, this group of people. So you will forever live in my memory as an amazing group to work with. The different points of view and the talents that have been brought to the table, I know have stretched me and made me grow, and I believe we all have come out of this better people and better able to serve the citizens of the city of Frederick and all the visitors that come here. So I want to thank you for, for challenging me and trusting me, and also to the, to Frederick for, for trusting me for the previous four years and for letting me do it again. So it's with, it's with a very bittersweet feeling that I say goodbye to some of my colleagues in this setting, but I'm sure that we will continue to see you in, in other settings. I look forward to seeing what, what happens in the future and wish you all who are leaving this group all the, all the success in the world, and, and thank you for, just thank you. That's all.
Thank you. There is one last thing to do, and it's not on the agenda, and this is somewhat of a little surprise, so bear me a little bit of indulgence, please. On behalf of the citizens and the staff of the city of Frederick, we'd like to present each of you the outgoing administration of the 60th administration, a token of our appreciation for your hard work and dedication. Just so you know, as you can see, and some of you may not be able to see, it's a beautiful picture of Baker Park and the carillon and the fountain down in Baker Park, and I'd like to give special recognition to Judy Arnold. She took the picture, so it's staff happening at this event, so thank you very much. Not done yet. What you didn't know is, I'm going to ask you to, I'll recite the state song, or city song. No, don't know that. I have another treat. On behalf of the staff of the city of Frederick, I'd like to present you another On behalf of the staff of the City of Frederick, I'd like to present you another small token.
That is the coolest thing ever.
A street sign for each of you. Now, as you can see, so just in case you don't get any weird thoughts about it, they're in a color that is not legal, so if you try to put them up somewhere, they're not good. We just wanted to say thank you from the staff and from the citizens, and from myself. Thank you very much for the 60th Administration. I've appreciated working with each and every one of you. I look forward to working with Alderman O'Connor and Russell again, and I know I will be working somewhere along the line with Alderman Young, Alderman Aloy, and Alderman Crim. Thank you all very much. And for a simple fee of $6.50, you can have those gifts. This ends the special meeting and the last meeting of the 60th Administration. Thank you all very much for your dedication and duty to the citizens of Frederick, and now officially close the meeting.
On behalf of the community, thanks to the mayor and the aldermen who have served and dedicated so much of their time and effort these past four years, certainly leading the city through what for everyone have been challenging times in terms of the economic climate, and so we certainly thank you for your commitment to public service. At this time, it is my pleasure to welcome Sandra Dalton, who is the clerk of the Circuit Court of Frederick County, to swear in the mayor and the next administration of aldermen.
It is always such a privilege to be here. I am honored today to be able to welcome in the new board. I've been privileged to give the oath to several previous boards, and it's just always such an honor. I have to say, it's not official, we are the City of Frederick, but many years ago, a previous mayor added a word that just still sticks in my head. This is the great City of Frederick. Don't you agree? So if I may, start with our newly-elected returning mayor, Mr. Randy McClemmott. If you would come forward. If you would, please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Randy McClemmott.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of mayor for the City of Frederick.
Execute the office of mayor of the City of Frederick.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and the laws of this state. So help me God.
You are duly sworn, sir. Congratulations. And now I would also like to welcome Ms. Kelly Russell, returning alderman for the next four years. And we all just heard she is ready to take on the next four years. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you would, please. I state your name.
I, Kelly Russell.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
That I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
That I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of alderman for the City of Frederick.
Execute the office of alderman for the City of Frederick.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
You are duly sworn, ma'am. Congratulations. Get your signature over here. And to join us now would be Mr. Michael O'Connor, returning alderman. I like being on this side of the microphone. I've had many interviews in front of Mr. O'Connor. If you would, please. I state your name.
I, Michael O'Connor.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
That I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
That I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of alderman for the City of Frederick.
Execute the office of alderman for the City of Frederick.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state. So help me God.
You are duly sworn, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Joining us now and new to the board this year is Mr. Philip Dacey and family. Beautiful girls. That's it. That's perfect. Yes, as long as you can hear me, you don't need to see me. I state your name.
I, Philip Dacey.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
That I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
That I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of alderman for the City of Frederick.
Execute the office of alderman for the City of Frederick.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
You are duly sworn, sir. Congratulations. Have your final, congratulations. Joining us now would be Mr. Joshua Bokey and family, new to the aldermen's board this year. I state your name.
I, Josh Bokey.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
Bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
Support the Constitution and laws thereof.
Support the Constitution and laws thereof.
That I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
That I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality and prejudice.
Execute the office of alderman for the City of Frederick.
Execute the office of alderman for the City of Frederick.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state. So help me God.
You are duly sworn, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And returning with just a little hiatus to the podium today would be Ms. Donna Kazemchek, who previously served on the Board of Aldermen and will bring great expertise. I state your name.
I, Donna Kazemchek.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
That I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of alderman for the City of Frederick.
Execute the office of alderman for the City of Frederick.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
You are duly sworn. You are duly sworn, ma'am. Congratulations. And for each of you, if I may, present to you a certificate, because they don't come from the governor's office when you're local, from the state of Maryland, to the mayor, and one for each of the Board of Aldermen of Frederick, Maryland. Greeting. Be it known that the people of the City of Frederick, reposing great trust and confidence in your integrity and wisdom, did elect you as mayor or alderman for the City of Frederick. You are therefore to execute the said office justly, honestly, diligently, and faithfully, according to law, and hold the same for a four-year term as determined by and according to the code of the City of Frederick, or until you shall be duly discharged therefrom. Having administered the oath of office for said office, I herein to subscribe my name and affix the seal of the Circuit Court for Frederick County, Maryland, this 12th day of December 2013. And I would like to present that. Ladies and gentlemen, if I may, present to you the 61st Administration for the City of Frederick, your new mayor and Board of Aldermen.
And thank you to Sandy Dalton for taking care of our official business today. This is the last time for four years that any of these folks will be swearing in front of you. They are going to do their best not to provoke the reverse, and we wish them the best going forward. At this time, I would like to invite the mayor, Randy McClemmott, to offer his inaugural address.
Thank you all very much for attending today. Loosen your ties, take off your jacket, I only have six hours' worth of speech. Today, I stand before you, humbled by your support and inspired by the confidence you have placed in us to help you make our great city even greater. From the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you. This is, this day is about celebrating new beginnings while reflecting on past accomplishments. As anxious as we all are to move on to forward challenges, let's take a minute to acknowledge those who have helped us reach this point. I would like to take this opportunity now to recognize two former mayors, three former mayors, excuse me, who are here today to join us. Mayor Paul Gordon. And Mayor Jim Grimes. Thank you all very much for taking time out to come to this important occasion. I also would like to recognize or ask everybody to say thank you to any former alderman, those who are in the 60th Administration, and those who have served us in the past. Thank you for all your due diligence. And I'd also like, at this point, to officially introduce, for the first time, from the mayor, the Board of Aldermen for the 61st Administration, Alderman Kelly Russell. the Board of Aldermen for the sixty-first administration, Alderman Kelly Russell, Alderman Michael O'Connor, Alderman Phil Dacey, Alderman Josh Bokey, and Alderman Donna Kazemchak. I also would take, take a minute to recognize our outgoing aldermen, Alderman Karen Young, Shelley Aloy, and Carol Crim, for their hard work and dedication to the city of Frederick. Please stand. I also want to acknowledge the men and women who work for the city of Frederick, both past and present, who are here with us today. I appreciate all of your hard work and dedication to this city, and I would ask if you would please stand and be recognized at this time. Our city staff's like church. They all sit in the back. I have many people to thank for my standing here today before you. The first, I thank my family. First and foremost, my wife, Mary Jane, who not only put up with all the stuff that comes along with a campaign, but raised her hand to be the campaign chair, ah, campaign treasurer, excuse me. My wonderful daughter, Melissa, who came here today from Fort Stewart, Georgia, to join us. Her husband, Captain Dan Campbell, my grandchildren, Charlotte and Jacob, are at Fort Stewart, Georgia right now, and I thank them for their support. My mother, Lillian, who could not be with us today. She's feeling ill. My father, Leonard, and his longtime companion, Jane, who are here today. Thank you. All have made sacrifices to help me accomplish this goal. Next, I want to recognize my incredible campaign team, led by Nikki Biamonte. My incredible, they exhausted themselves in this cause, and I cannot thank them enough. Finally, to everyone who took the time to participate in both the general and primary elections, thank you. You are the key stakeholders in our government. Your exercise of constitutional privileges grant you the right to complain when we get it wrong, and the right to celebrate with us when we get it right. Regardless of which candidate earned your vote, I will work tirelessly over the next four years to earn your trust. In the February fifteenth, eighteen twenty-three issue of the Frederick Town Herald, John Lackland Harding announced his decision to run for mayor. His appeal states as follows: "Fellow citizens, from the solicitation of my friends, I am induced to offer myself to your consideration as a candidate for the mayoralty at the ensuing election, and if elected, will enforce the ordinances of the corporation of justice, moderation, and strict impartiality, and will recommend useful and economical expenditures only, so that taxes may be reduced to suit the present pressure of the times." John L. Harding. John L. Harding became the fourth mayor of the city of Frederick in eighteen twenty-three, and held the office until eighteen twenty-six. I mention this because, as you heard, in eighteen twenty-three, two topics of concern were spending and taxes. Things have not changed much since eighteen twenty-three. Today, we will begin the work of the sixty-first administration. We now transition from running for office to serving in office. The emphasis is on service, since all of us are temporary stewards of your public trust. The oath we take affirms a sacred trust, a promise that each of us will do our best to carry out our duties under the charter to the best of our skill and to the best of our ability. We promise to treat everyone fairly, to show no favor, and to be careful and diligent keepers of our respective offices until our service ends. We live together in a great city. We have at our fingertips resources and assets that other cities can only dream of. We walk on streets with history and character mostly untouched by time. While we appreciate the media recognition that comes with the awards and acknowledgements we've received over the years, we don't need to be told that Frederick is great. It is through our shared sacrifice, hard work, and community commitment that it's become such a great place to live. We're not content to rest on past awards. Our focus is forward-looking, and together, we have much to do. As we do look forward, I want to discuss the concept of what we consider the political normal. In the distant past, normal was defined by increasing revenues thanks to consistently raising, rising property assessments. Normal was asking that the city spend more on people, infrastructure, and popular programs, comfortable in the knowledge that as assessments went up, so did city spending. I think the last four years have shown us a new normal: tighter budgets, less discretionary spending, smaller federal and state pass-through grants, and generally tougher choices looks like the landscape we will face in the near future. That's not to say that things will be as bad as they have been, or that we won't be able to invest in the future. It just means that we'll have to be smarter about it, to make better decisions, and to, and to ask tougher value questions about future spending plans. I have no doubt that this sixty-first administration is up to that task. Each and every one of our newly-elected leaders understands and accepts the task ahead, and the challenges and opportunities before us. I hope you'll join with us, as we'll need the collective talents of all of our residents to succeed. One note that we should all remember, that it is a privilege to serve as an elected official. We ask people to put their faith in us to make decisions that significantly affect their lives. Our response after ending the campaigning should not be pride in being elected, but humility, humility in the face of that faith placed upon us. Let's recommit ourselves together to joining forces and joining voices to assist our neighbors in need, to support our local shops and businesses, and to build on our past achievements as we face our future challenges. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, Mayor McClement will call, call to order the first meeting of the new administration, a special meeting of the mayor and Board of Aldermen.
It is my honor and privilege to call the first meeting to order of the sixty-first administration. We have one item on our agenda, and that item is an important one. It's the election of the president pro tem of the Board of Aldermen. Do I hear a motion?
I move the election of Kelly Russell, president pro tem of the Board of Aldermen.
I second that motion.
There is a motion made by Alderman O'Connor to present Alderman Russell as president pro tem, seconded by Alderman Kazemchak. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's five-oh. Congratulations. Just to let you know, this is the tempo that we will set. Short, sweet, to the point, get things done. The meeting of, the first meeting of the sixty-first administration has ended. I call it to a close.
Congratulations again to the new administration. As they clear the stage, we'll be treated to a performance in just a moment of the, by the Frederick Children's Chorus, under the direction of Judy DeBose. Hopefully, if you all attend the next meeting of this mayor and board, it won't take very long to approve the minutes of that special meeting. We'll see. Please welcome the Frederick Children's Chorus. A thank you to the Frederick Children's Chorus. Thank you, Judy. Wonderful job. We really appreciate you adding to the program. And finally, just a few other thanks. We want to thank the great staff and volunteers here at the Weinberg Center for accommodating our program this morning. A thank you to Mary Jane McClements, Susan Harding, Lauren O'Malley, Donna Foden, and Donna Goff for coordinating the program. And finally, thank you to Claire and Erin O'Connor for attending the guestbook in the lobby that hopefully you had a chance to sign. Please catch it if you haven't. And there is actually one more thank you. That's to each and every one of you for attending today. You are all invited over to City Hall, just a block from here, for a reception that follows the program. Again, best wishes to the new administration. Thanks to the outgoing folks, and thank you all for being here for this important occasion. Have a good day. Have a good day.